Right. A call to order the regular meeting in the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, February 12th, 2019, and we'll start with roll call.
Sina Sharp is absent. Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Robin Klein is excused. Don Francis?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
All right, we have to begin this evening, a special presentation. I'd like to welcome the family. It looks like we have here. That's wonderful. A ceremonial swearing-in of new police officer Joshua Stowe.
My name is Joshua Stowe. A little bit about myself. I grew up in Hartford, Wisconsin, which, for those of you who don't know, is about forty minutes straight north of Milwaukee. I started attending UW Platteville back in 2015, and I'm currently finishing up my last semester, and I'll graduate in May. I've actually been working with Platteville Police Department since May of 2016 as one of their community service officers. Currently, I am also a Lance Corporal in the Marine Corps Reserves and a member of Platteville's volunteer fire department. I joined that back in September of 2017. This past summer is when I graduated from the Police Academy. I attended at Southwest Technical College up in Fenimore. And I'm very excited to be starting here, and I'd like to thank everybody for welcoming me on.
I stand a little bit close to you, so I'm recorded as well. So I state your name.
I, Joshua J. Stowe.
Have been appointed to the office of police officer.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think if Chief McKinley were here, he would want, he would note that this brings us to full staff, actually, for our sworn officers. And so, in addition to having such an exceptional individual, we're very, very excited to be at full strength. Thank you.
I must say, I feel really protected because there are a bunch of police officers in the back. Anyway, welcome. All right, on to the consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the review nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion in action. Council minutes from our January 22nd meeting, payment of bills, financial report for January, appointments to boards and commissions, and I have two this evening, to the Board of Appeals zoning as an alternate, Jennifer Ginter-Light, and to the Community Development Board, Stacy Strobel. Licenses in the packet, one-year and two-year operating licenses to sell and serve alcohol, and a run permit for St. Patty's 5K by Hi-Fib Fitness on Saturday, March 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
We'll have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, assistance, comments, observations, and petitions. I have one this evening, but that will be for something that we're discussing later. For those of you who are not familiar with our method here, we have these small green sheets of paper on the back table, and if you'd like to speak at this time, you would fill out one of those and let us know that. Reports in the packet, Police and Fire Commission, Francis?
Nothing to add.
Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Francis?
No addition.
And Community Safe Roads Committee, Francis?
Nothing further.
Museum Board, Stockhausen?
Nothing to add.
Other reports in our packet include a water and sewer financial report for January, also the airport financial report for January, and department progress reports. Anyone have any questions or comments on any of those? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the action items.
I have an announcement.
Oh, all right, you have an announcement.
It is the ski plane chili fly-in at the airport this Saturday.
Which is the?
Sixteenth, I believe.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Ten to noon, I believe, is, are the hours.
Okay.
So, planes on skis, and then chili. So we hope that happens. I mean, this year, we have snow. We've, other years, tried to do this and had no snow. It's a little hard to plan your ski plane then.
Yeah, we just hope we don't have too much snow.
Right.
Anybody else have any announcements? All right, master, or the museum master planning base drawings.
I'll jump in for Museum Director Flush, since the weather's been a little bit challenging tonight. So you might recall that when our previous director was here, we talked about, and the council had given approval, to use binding trust monies to work towards developing a museum campus plan. And I guess one of the benefits of having a new director with an architectural background is that they're able to give you solid direction about where to start. And so Eric is recommending that we begin by using some of these binding monies to fund the creation of rock school drawings, which don't exist, we don't have good drawings for right now, and then to trace some of our existing paper drawings and move them to digital format.
Any questions, anyone, on this?
And this would all be binding trust money, and we need a budget amendment to do that because it's a capital project, right?
Is there a motion?
I move we amend the 2019 budget by adding a CIP project of $10,500 to create the museum master planning base drawings, and that will be funded by the museum binding trust money that was given by Carmen and Eva Bynum.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is ordinance 1902, authorizing the code enforcement officer to issue municipal citations.
So again, I'll jump in here. So this is really code change to kind of reflect our current organizational structure. We added a code enforcement officer last year as part of a broader organizational change, and this would allow that code enforcement officer, which is not a sworn position but a civilian position within the police department, to issue municipal citations at the direction of the building inspector and remove Lieutenant Buckholz from that process, which would just make it more efficient.
Any questions or comments?
I have two questions.
Okay.
Will the code enforcement officer do any checking of rentals as far as the number of persons in a rental?
That would not be something that would fall under that position. The building inspector would continue to do that.
And then the second question, would this person do anything as far as checking parking on the property as far as rentals and other places?
She currently does get involved on issues, parking in the grass, for example. I think there has been also a couple of cases of unlicensed vehicles. Under our ordinance, they're considered junk vehicles on the property, so that would be part of her duties, and it has been in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve this change?
I move to add the code enforcement officer to the list of individuals authorized to issue municipal citations under ordinance 1.10E.
Second?
Second.
We'll have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is a certified survey map for 900 Valley Road.
So this property is the former site of the Innovative Ag Services business. The property is for sale. They're looking to do a certified survey map approval to divide the lot into, right now, it's one parcel, but it's actually divided by Valley Road. Valley Road crosses that property via easement, so technically, it's one lot. They've got an interested party in the northern lot, or the northern part of the lot, where the buildings are, but that person is not interested in the southern part of the lot, which is vacant. So actually dividing into two parcels will make the sale of that property a little bit easier to manage. The lots would meet all of our requirements of our ordinance. The only condition that we're recommending, and the Plan Commission agreed, is rather than have Valley Road be located via easement, or authorized via easement, we'd like to have that right-of-way, actually dedicated as street right-of-way. For practical purposes, it should make a whole lot of difference, but it does give us a little bit more flexibility for locating utilities and other future improvements within that right-of-way, if it's actually a dedicated street rather than easement. The property owner is agreeable to that, so it's really a matter of changing the designation of how that street is located on the CSN. With that condition, staff would recommend approval. Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I make a motion to approve this certified survey map to create two lots for the property at 900 Valley Road, with a condition that the portion of the lots within the easement for the city streets be dedicated to the city as street right-of-way, and that the CM may be recorded with the Grant County Register of deeds and a copy provided to the city.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is the application of the Roundtree Hall loan payment.
Back in May of 2018, the city extended its real estate note with Roundtree Hall Associates. That note was originally extended in 1988 using federal funds, a grant, HUD grant, and as part of the extension, the city negotiated to have Roundtree Hall pay $200,000 back to the city as part of the extension. Because the $200,000 is actually a repayment of federal funds, there are some stipulations that were a part of the original grant on how repayments can be used. Specifically, they need to be used primarily for low and moderate income residential rental purposes. We've determined that the $200,000 can be used to support the city's investment in the Pioneer Ford Ruxton Apartments development, because that development meets the requirements of an income-qualified residential rental property. And then by doing that, we would be able to reimburse to the city from TID 7 some of the advance that has been made by the city towards TID 7 over the past few years. There is an alternative, which would be to hold those $200,000 worth of funds for a potential or possible future development of an income-qualified residential rental property. However, staff recommends approving the transfer of the $200,000 to TID 7 to support the Ruxton Apartments' development.
Questions, anyone?
I have a question. The $200,000 goes to support the apartments. Will the $200,000 then go back from the Ruxton Apartments account, whatever that account is, to the general fund, the entire amount, the $200,000?
Yes. So the support of the Ruxton Apartment development represents money that was already invested from TID 7 into, and that money was originally funded by the city. So the city expended money to TID 7 to support the development of the Pioneer Ford site, and so this would essentially reimburse some of that investment, and it would qualify under the grant stipulations as supporting that low and moderate income residential rental purpose. So the entire $200,000 would be reimbursed back to the city, which would be reimbursing an advance that the city made to TID 7.
And then there, as far as to the Ruxton Apartments, originally was made, $292,551. Now, the $92,551, is that going to be reimbursed at some time? That's the last page. That's page after page 11.
$292,551, is that what you said?
$92,551.
There's a reimbursement amount of $292,551, and is that, are we talking about the same?
Yes. Is the $92,000 also going to be reimbursed?
Yes.
At some time?
Yes. So that, the balance, the $92,000 is projected to be the amount that the TID 7 essentially will have as a surplus in 2018, so that it can reimburse the advances. So over the coming years, TID 7 will have some surplus, because it shares increment with TID 5. And as that increment comes into TID 7, after it's met its obligations, it will be able to reimburse both the city and then the water and sewer utility, because if you look at that last page, you'll see that there was advance made from the water and sewer utility in support of TID 7 from prior development. And so we anticipate that all of that advances will be eventually reimbursed by TID 7 to the general fund and to the Water and Sewer Utility Fund.
But there's no timeframe given here as far as reimbursement to the water and sewer fund?
Not on this particular sheet, but I can provide that to you if you'd like.
I would just note that we're going to update our long-range financial plan this summer, and obviously, this would be part of that projection.
Well, that's going to start sometime in 2019?
I'm sorry, what?
Will that start sometime in 2019, the water and sewer?
At this point, the projection is to reimburse the general fund first, and then the water and sewer fund.
Well, when does the reimbursement start to the water and sewer?
I don't have that information in my files, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion on the application of Roundtree, or, yeah, application of Roundtree Hall loan payment?
I move to approve. I move to transfer the $200,000 Roundtree Hall Associates loan repayment of HUD grant funds to TID 7 in support of the Pioneer Ford redevelopment project to build the Ruxton Apartments, and to reimburse $200,000 to the general fund.
Is there a second?
My second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, the last action item, 2019 city goals.
And S has been our policy the last few years. We develop goals with the Common Council, and so this is just to sort of finalize those goals for 2019. There may be adjustments as we go throughout the year. We'll continue to do our quarterly reports with respect to progress on the goals. I would note that I think in the first half of this year, we're going to be pretty focused on wrapping up the housing study and identifying what potential project we might want to use the funds from the closure of TID 4 for, TID 4 for, because we are able to extend that TID for a year, which will, for the purpose of housing. So, but we need to identify what that purpose or use would be. And I think we'll also be focused on the move in terms of moving City Hall departments to the former police station area. Once those two items are completed, then I think we'll probably move on to the long-range financial plan, the inclusivity plan, and doing our strategic plan for the upcoming three years.
Any questions, anyone, on the information about the goals for the city?
Make a motion, we adopt the 2019 city goals as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, under information and discussion, we have first, the employee handbook revision.
So the employee handbook has not undergone a major revision since 2011, and in reviewing the handbook, you know, staff were aware that there was some language in the old handbook that was not current, was outdated, and did not match our current practice. And there were also certain policies that are recommended to be included in handbooks as standard practice to comply with federal and state law that were either absent or not updated in our old handbook. So staff began the revision process of the handbook by identifying a handbook which we could use as a template with more current language and more extensive policies in it. And then that template was taken, and a thorough side-by-side comparison and analysis was done with our current handbook to make sure that all the City of Platteville's policies and procedures were incorporated into the new handbook. The city manager reviewed each chapter in detail, providing edits and providing policy language where appropriate. And then the compiled new handbook was provided to department directors for their review. We had a couple of hour work session where we went page by page through the entire new handbook to discuss any feedback that the directors had, making sure that the policies and procedures would apply consistently across the city according to the different departments, and that we incorporated any exceptions that we needed to make for practice in a specific department, such as the street department availability and overtime policy. We also then sent the updated handbook to our Labor Council for his review, and incorporated his edits and suggestions into the updated draft. We also provided that updated draft to members of the Finance Division to make sure that payroll implications may, would have been considered and adopted into the handbook. And then it also went to our HR advisory team, which is a team made up of seven employees that represent different departments in the city, to get the feedback from an employee standpoint as well. Just to review some substantive changes, there were some minor changes, some language updates and so forth, but the substantive policy changes that are included in the revised handbook are as follows. Holiday leave, so Christmas Eve previously has been a half-day holiday, and the consensus among staff and directors were that the Christmas Eve should become a full day instead of a half-day to provide some relief for having to staff various offices around the city, particularly in City Hall. And in trade for that full day, the number of float holiday hours would be reduced from 20 hours to 16 hours. We also had developed a new vacation leave policy, which is now incorporated into the revised handbook, and that new vacation leave policy has a few different facets. One is that new employees, i.e. employees hired after September the 1st of 2017, will accrue vacation on a pay period basis, rather than vacation being front-loaded at the beginning of the employee's anniversary year. So it is standard practice for employment and for employers to have an accrual-based system rather than front-loading vacation. The problem with front-loading vacation is that if an employee leaves, and they've already taken vacation that was in their vacation bank, they end up owing vacation back to the city. So it's not an ideal way to process vacation. Also, in the vacation policy, the vacation in the first year of employment has been increased from a week to two weeks. And then there's also a provision which allows employees to carry a maximum vacation in their vacation bank of 80 hours over their vacation allowance. So what this does is if an employee, perhaps in their first year, gets very busy and they have a tough time taking all the vacation, they don't lose it at the end of the year, and they don't have to have a special accommodation by the city manager. They can simply carry over whatever they weren't able to use during that year, but up to a maximum of 80 hours over their vacation allowance. Another policy change was sick leave. Up until now, the sick leave was used in half-hour increments, but vacation was used in quarter-hour increments. We've now changed this to be consistent, so that both types of leave are used in quarter-hour increments. The family and medical leave policy has been extended and detailed, so that it's all incorporated into the handbook, instead of being just a separate detailed policy. As I mentioned before, the street division availability and overtime policy is incorporated in Appendix B of the handbook. And then also, a safe harbor policy related to employees classified as exempt is included in Appendix E. Generally, the employee responsibility section has been reorganized and augmented to provide more information and guidelines to employees regarding expectations, particularly including safety, controlled substance-free workplace, and the expanded harassment prevention and respectful behavior policy, which is included in Appendix D. And then there has been the addition of a chapter to address the use of city information and communication systems, the IT chapter. So those are the substantive policy changes that are included in the revised handbook. Can I ask any questions from anybody about the revised handbook?
This is a lot of work.
It did take over six months to go through the process of putting this together.
It's a lot of work. I've read, I'm not going to say I've read all of it, because it's very long, but I have read through a lot of it, and this takes a lot of time, a lot of work, and a lot of thought, and so, thank you.
I agree. I will also confess, I have not completely read the whole thing, but I have started.
We're not good, are we?
Any questions?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Started on page five, under purpose, it says that in the second line, that this handbook can be amended at any time without notice. So that means it can be amended by whom? Anybody? City manager? Is the city manager in charge of amendment, or?
It means it can be amended. It's a notice to the employee to explain that the document as a whole is not something that is static and will never be changed, and it gives the city, protects the city's legal right to change the handbook at any time. The process for changing the handbook would be through the city manager, and I think if it was substantive enough, it would come to the council, but there would be some changes that would not rise to that level.
And with that said, I mean, the standard practice is that whenever you would make a change to the handbook, you would obviously notify your employees so that they were aware of that change, in addition to working through the council, depending on if it was a major or minor change.
That's what I was asking about. Would the update go through the council?
I think, Ken, in my mind, it would depend on if it was a minor or substantive change. So if we notice that we've made a clerical error somewhere in the document, and we want to clean that up, or there's some small thing that's changed in terms of our operations, and so that it's no longer consistent, that might be a change. I would see that could be within my purview, but if it were a substantive change in terms of our benefit policy, or... But if it were substantive change in terms of our benefit policy or our compensation policy, I think that would have to go through the common council.
My next question on page five is, do the police department members, the fire department members, do they sign and receive a handbook?
Yes, they do, because the handbook would contain provisions and policies for things that are not covered through the union contract. So, the union contract takes precedence where policies are specifically mentioned or covered in the union contract, but where they're not, then the handbook would apply.
Okay, my next question is on page 10. It's the one, the third paragraph. It says, employees, excuse me, are employed at will. Could you explain the legal basis for at will? Because it says at will, you do not have to give any reason for termination.
Correct. So, the legal basis is that in the state of Wisconsin, you know, you can, employers have the right to employ at will, and that, as you've just stated, there does not need to be a reason for separation.
At will, is that, is that something that I could look up as to where it is defined by some ruling?
Yes, it's a common employment.
Okay.
And basically, the concept is that employees can leave at any time, and the employer can unemployment at any time. There's no contract between the parties. And this is not a change. This was in the, this is in the existing handbook.
Yes, I encountered that about eight years ago. Well, who, my next question is, who are employees is, that are at will? Which employees, as far as staff, are at will, as far as hiring? In other words, if they have a contract, then they're not at will?
Correct. So, employees that would be covered under the union contract are not at-will employees. We also have certain employees that are covered under special provisions through the police and fire commission.
Well, for example, city staff. Is city staff below you at will or contract?
With the exception of the two groups that I just mentioned, they're at will.
At will, okay. Okay, then, going down on page 10, I need an explanation of step one, written grievance submission. It says you're supposed to, the employee's supposed to submit within 10 business days of when the employee knows or should have known. And so, what I have a little trouble with, where it says, or should have known, of the events giving rise to the grievance.
So, this is not a change. This language is directly from the previous handbook, and what the grievance procedure is statutorily required. And again, this is received, you know, legal counsel review. The language is to make sure that an employee that perhaps indicates that they did not know of something, but there was ample opportunity for them to have known, this just indicates that the employee would be required to submit within that 10 days if they had ample opportunity to know of the events that giving rise to the grievance.
So, then, my next question is, it says, within 10 business days. So, in this handbook, does that say then that you can't submit anything that's older than 10 days?
If an employee wants to.
What if some, let me go on. What if something is six months old, a year old, and the person has not decided to submit it? Now, can that person submit a grievance?
No.
If it's beyond.
As it states, the employee must prepare and file a written grievance with the department director within 10 business days of when the employee knows or.
But there may be situations where the person decides that they want to submit a grievance, and now, it's, say, six months beyond the date of the occurrence, beyond the date of the events. So, that means that they're out, they can't do anything.
Correct.
Okay, page 11. Chapter three, it says, the City of Platteville shall select the impartial hearing officer. What about, the City of Platteville shall select, together with the, let me, I have it written here, oh, the City of Platteville, together with the approval of the employee, shall select the impartial hearing officer. In other words, the employee has no input into selection of the impartial hearing officer.
Yes, and that may be statutory. I, you know, I don't know off the top of my head if that, if the way in which this was.
I have some experience with people taking part in the selection of the hearing person. So, I'm wondering why it's not done here.
The recommendation of our employment council would be that that's retained as a management prerogative, and a management selection.
Yeah, I may bring that back. Okay, going to page 34. This is under controlled substance-free workplace. On the first line, the policy the City of Platteville to provide and to make a good-faith effort to maintain a controlled substance-free workplace. To me, to make a good-faith effort is weak. I would say simply, the policy the City of Platteville to provide and to maintain a controlled substance-free workplace. Page 34.
I think, again, that language is likely legally advised by our council, because there may be circumstances where the city cannot guarantee that the workplace is substance-free.
This is not talking about guarantee, it's talking about policy. So, the policy, the policy is to provide and to maintain a controlled substance workplace. So, you're not guarantee, guaranteeing that you're providing it.
I can definitely take that back to council and see if they would have any objection to changing that language.
So, my recommendation is to take out, to make a good-faith effort, because you get into, what is a good-faith effort? Who's going to determine a good-faith effort? And that's too, to me, that's too vague.
Okay.
And then, under the policy, 216. Way at the end, I guess that's D.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
I'm going to the policy D.
Excuse me.
You have at the back here, policy, I guess that's supposed to be 2-16, harassment prevention and respectful behavior policy. So, my question is, under page three. Under procedures, that's page three, procedures, are you with me?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Page three. Since you bring in about office holders here, I'm giving this out, that under procedures, any employee or office holder experiencing and so forth, that first paragraph, and the second paragraph, any employee or office holder who believes, because the office holder can submit things to city manager, council president, chief of police, city attorney. And so, I'd like that to be considered, and. The other, the last two things I have, where, is there any discussion of employees doing things which are events against an office holder? Employees doing events against an office holder, such as retaliation. So, that's the first one. And the second one, employees doing events against residents of the City of Platteville, and it's part of their work performance, or they believe it to be part of their work performance. So, those two things, employees doing events against office holders, and employees doing events against residents of the City of Platteville. So, if you look up those, and I'll come see you sometime and see what you found. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
And I would just note, as I had emailed earlier, that it'd be very, very helpful if we get the questions in advance, because that would enable us to consult with our labor council, so that we can provide that feedback to you.
I read this whole thing, I studied this whole thing, it takes time.
So, if you can give those questions in writing, Ken, to staff, that would be very helpful, is what Karen is suggesting, and any other questions you might come up with prior to the next meeting, so that the staff has time to investigate.
Yes.
And try to get your answers. Okay, so, anybody on the council who has questions, please get them to staff before our next meeting. All right, hearing another comments, we are going to go on to the next one, which is resolution adopting administrative policy 1116, harassment prevention and respectful behavior policy.
So, I'm, sorry, the, because the harassment and respectful behavior policy references office holders in addition to employees, it's appropriate that we would have a policy that is not, that is standalone, as well as being referenced in the appendix of the handbook for employees, that it would also be a standalone administrative policy of the City of Platteville. And so, that's why that particular policy is also being brought forward as policy 2-16, which would be a City of Platteville administrative policy, and would need to be adopted via resolution by the council.
A clarification, an office holder, anybody beyond the seven council members, do you consider office holders people that are members of a commission, appointed to a commission?
I would say yes, but Karen, would you agree with that?
I would agree with that as well.
Yes, so, any position, any office held by any person.
It references elected and appointed?
Any other questions? Next is ordinance adopting the Wisconsin municipal records schedules.
The, so, I've been working with the Wisconsin Historical Society, along with the public records board, and they've recently updated the municipal record schedule. This was August 27th of this last year, 2018. This was a pretty big undertaking for them. I believe the last time this was updated was early 1980s, so this is a pretty big deal. The updated record schedule provides guidance to city staff with the proper amount of retention time, as well as how to dispose of the records once the retention time has expired. All current record retention schedules were reviewed by the city clerk's office, and it's determined that the schedules would be, need to be updated. And the first step in this process was to identify which record schedules applied to the City of Platteville. There are a number of record schedules that are available. Then, there were, the proper forms were filled out that were required and submitted for approval from the Wisconsin Historical Society. The Wisconsin Historical Society reviewed our request for approval for each of these schedules, and the state archivist signed off on the forms. The forms were then sent to the public records board for approval and signed by the public records board executive secretary. These forms were then sent back to the city clerk's office here in Platteville, so we can maintain copies of those, and we received approval on all the 10 schedules that I applied for, which were the following that are listed here. It's the Wisconsin municipal record that was just updated, the administrative and related record, the budget and related record, facilities management and related record, fleet and aircraft management, human resources and related record, payroll and related records, purchasing and procurement related records, risk management and related records, and the Wisconsin public libraries and public library systems and related records. Using these schedules, city staff would like to apply the retention times to our record management and organization. This would allow all departments to have consistency, organization, and proper maintenance of documents that have reached their retention times. And I've worked along with attorney William Cole, and he drafted the draft, the ordinance that you see in draft form here. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Questions on any of that?
I guess the general question, how far back do we have records that need to be examined and some of them purged?
We have a lot of records that we have to go through, and we've already started going through a number of them. The move is kind of pushing us right along, I guess, but it's, it'll be a good, good time to go through that. The nice thing, too, is it gives us an opportunity to find perhaps some historical valued records that the WHS has asked for, that are 75-plus years old, and we found some neat records that are, that applies to, so it's been, it's been interesting.
These are stored now in the basement?
There are some records in the basement. We do have the vault where some records are stored, and then, just in various departments.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, next is the conditional use permit intensive home occupation at 345 Bailey Avenue.
Yes, the resident at 345 Bailey Avenue was recently applied for and was granted a kennel license. Under the city's regulations, any property owner or any resident who desires to have more than four dogs on their property is required to get a kennel license, which allows them to have up to 10 dogs on that property. They have to meet certain conditions as far as enclosure, distance from adjoining properties and so forth. The resident at 345 Bailey, as I mentioned, had already gone through that process, but in addition to that, they would like to sell the puppies that they would have in the future, and they would also like to board the dogs for other people on that property. So, under the guidelines in the chapter 22, or zoning ordinance, that falls under the purview of intensive home occupation, since it is a residential area. So, as that category requires a conditional use permit, so they have to go through the process of getting approval to do that. So, they have submitted that approval, because they would like to sell their puppies and board other people's dogs. They have met, as I mentioned, the conditions for having the kennel, but this is the additional step that's required. So, the staff has some concerns with this, just because of potential problems that could come up when you're dealing with a number of dogs, potential odors, and obviously, barking dogs, that could be an inconvenience for the neighborhood. So, we have recommended. So we have recommended denial of this request. The planning commission has reviewed this and also has recommended denial. As an alternative, if, if council is, desires to support this request and grant an approval, we would suggest that it be basically a conditional approval granted for a one-year basis, which would allow us to determine if there, if there are problems, what they are, how to address them, and we could place additional conditions on the approval for future years. So we could kind of do it as a trial approval. That would be an alternative that the council would like to pursue. Any questions? And I should say, this will be a public hearing at the next meeting.
I will also note that the applicant is here and asked to speak. So does anyone have questions for Joe before Mr. Winch comes up? Okay. Mr. Winch, if you'll come up to the podium, please, and give your name and address?
Okay. My name is Dan Winch. This is Raider. I'm at 345 Bailey Avenue, obviously the same residence that we're talking about here. The planning committee, as it was mentioned, did suggest against the conditional use permit, which is also a suggestion in favor of us getting additional dogs. So we did actually go out and pick up Raider this weekend, following the planning commission's recommendation. So I wanted to let everyone meet Raider first and foremost. Anyone want to hold him? I have a presentation here that I leave my hands for. All right. So I... I think that in part, maybe the planning commission didn't have all the information, or maybe there was a little bit of a misunderstanding or something. So the, let's talk about what happens if yes versus no. Now, no matter whether the conditional use permit is accepted or not, there will still be dogs at this location, at minimum, seven dogs. Okay? No matter what, because we obviously picked up Raider here. That's number seven. The conditional use permit is regarding commercial purposes, and breeding is not considered commercial. So the dogs, there still will be breeding at this location. That is the same either way. The difference is the actual sale of the puppies. So now, if we do get the conditional use permit, we'll be able to sell them in the home. So when people come, they can buy them right in the home. If it is rejected, the sale will have to be in a public place. Sorry, should I turn this so you guys can see too? Yeah, you can see too. So it has to be in a public place, like for example, the sidewalk in front of our house, or the park two houses down, or Piggly Wiggly, one house over. So it makes it a lot easier for people when they come to just pick it up in the house, the puppy. And then the other thing is about boarding. So if, if we are allowed to do boarding, there will be anywhere between zero to three additional dogs at any time. If we do not get it, there will always be an additional three dogs at this location, because we will pick up additional dogs for breeding purposes. So if we do not get the kennel license, or excuse me, the, the conditional use permit, we will have to do the, the sale in a public location, and there will be an additional three dogs at this location, which also obviously means additional puppies being bred there. So those are the main differences. Some of the concerns that the committee had, I'd like to address at this point. Okay. There was concern that this is a residential district and that it would change the dynamic of the neighborhood. But just one house to the east is the very large commercial district, Piggly Wiggly. One block north is the bank corporate headquarters. One block to the west is a commercially operated gas station. This is a mixed community of commercial and residential properties, and it seems to me a reasonable place to have a light commercial traffic for something such as a boarding and breeding kennel. This traffic has never been an issue in the past, and I don't see a reason for why it would be in the future. One of the concerns about changing the dynamic of the neighborhood is what, what came up. I'd like to share with you, and you guys can pass this down. I made two different maps here, one that's a little bit easier to read than the other. These are the other breeding, excuse me, the other boarding facilities in Platteville. And I'm not talking about the veterinarian clinics. I'm talking about the other people who do this in home. So let's see. There are five other dog boarding facilities in the city of Platteville that are in a residential district. This does not include the vets, obviously. I just said that. Three of these are, three, three of these residentially operated facilities are within a few blocks of our home. One is as few as three blocks away. One boarding location actually just closed in December, and was literally right across the road from us. It's a very dog-friendly neighborhood, and if the city would allow us, we would like to keep it that way. To change the dynamic of the neighborhood would be to shut down the in-home boarding facilities that are along, that have a longstanding history of operation in this community. If we are not allowed to board, will the city shut down other home boarders? For example, these people right here? If not, does that set a precedent? Breeding spaces are well-recognized, is well-recognized in the community. We have been reached out to on several locations by the university to have our dogs do campus programming activities and stuff of that nature. Boarding dogs is not the only commercial activity in Platteville being run out of a home. A Vista, which employs 200 engineers, allows employees to work out of their home, which is a commercial activity. Many other businesses allow employees to work from home, such as call centers. Ken, I believe your son runs a lawn care facility. No? I was told he... Oh, okay. Well, that's what I was told. Either way, that's an example where, where if that person does not have a conditional use permit, it raises questions. For example, Mrs. Westeby of City Hall here. Her husband runs a store out of his, out of his residence that sells electronic components and whatnot. Platteville has plumbers, contractors, electricians, artists, computer and phone repair technicians who all use their home as their office. There are 85 registered Girl Scouts in the city of Platteville who all sell Girl Scout cookies out of their homes. There are two whole Boy Scout troops that sell popcorn or the candy bars. The soccer club sells discount cards. The Platteville baseball team sells coupons. Other school functions sell products from their home. What about in-home babysitters? Even children being paid money in exchange for watching their siblings would qualify as a commercial activity in being done in a residence, selling goods out of their homes, such as Amazon. All these things would require a conditional use permit if the same applies to us. Those making and selling goods, such as furniture and decorations, anyone using Facebook Marketplace or sales pages would need a conditional use permit as well for those activities. Uber and Lyft. If, if we are denied, this would, would be also just as illegal in Platteville, which would stunt the growth of Platteville as a whole. I think we can see how if we need a conditional use permit and we get denied that, it makes a huge impact on everyone in the city, and most everyone would require this. It would be unfair to only enforce the rule on me and not to enforce it on other commercial activities in residential locations. Worse than that, it would actually be legal abuse. I looked it up. Apparently, the quote is, "The biased use of enforcement discretion is usually considered legal abuse and a threat to the rule of law." So if it doesn't apply to everyone equally, it's not fair to anyone. Basically, what it comes down to. Let's talk about the unintended outcome should this decision not go through. The home in question was a rental property before being purchased. It was drastically improved, in part by the funds generated by the property, by the activity of Bernie's Buds. I'd like to pass down here. So you can all see. Top picture. Top picture is the before. Bottom picture is the after, what it looks like now of the property. And you can see that it's, it's well-upgraded. We've been maintaining it well. We've been doing a lot to this property. This is a tax-paying business that is beloved in the community and is at risk of being forced to relocate out of Platteville if, you know, worse comes to worse. If that happens, Platteville loses tax revenue, and this beautiful home will turn into yet another minimally up-kept rental property. And Platteville loses the claim to the only facility between Ames and Milwaukee that can offer trans cervical artificial insemination. More importantly, a nine-year-old girl will be forced to move out of her, out of the only stable home she's ever known. So for those in the back, I'll repeat it again. A nine-year-old girl will be forced to move from the only stable home she has known. To me, that's changing the dynamic of the community. If the city council doesn't want to change the dynamic, I would suggest accepting the proposal here. If the... Let's see, I read that. Planning commission members suggested against the conditional use permit, due in part to traffic, yet no study has ever been done to show that any evidence, to show any evidence that traffic would increase drastically or to show that traffic is, would be excessive in the area. If traffic is to be considered a legitimate concern, it should be backed by evidence showing that the traffic increase would be a problem. If the city is concerned about additional traffic, my question, then, is it also illegal for me to make additional friends who might come visit? Because that would also increase the number of cars and quote-unquote, change the dynamic of the community. What if my neighbors make friends? That would also increase the traffic. What if rental properties in the area have more or fewer tenants? That would also change the dynamic. What we're asking for is not some large-scale thing here. We're looking to continue what we've been doing and board a couple dogs. It's not a, a huge thing. It's not going to change the landscape of the community, and perhaps that was overlooked. One of the things, too, that was a question that was raised... More papers to pass down here for you. Okay. One of the questions that was raised was what effects on property value might this have? And what I'm passing down are, the top one is my Zillow estimate over the course of the last five years. And one of my neighbors didn't have a, didn't appear on Zillow. But the other three neighbors, it has the Zillow estimate of what the property is worth over the course of the last five years. And obviously, as we've been boarding and breeding for the last five years, that's the relevant time period. And you'll see that every single property value in that time went up. So I do not believe that a property value concern is one that we should be concerned with. And that's, I guess, all I have. Do I, are there any questions that I can answer?
I want to go back to your comparison to the other people that have, that board dogs.
Okay.
There are five, you said five?
There are, there are five that board in their home.
How do they board the dogs? Are the dogs boarded inside of a house?
You'd have to reach out to them individually, but they do keep them on that residence, because there's a difference between boarding and doggy daycare and in-home visits. So these are, these five are doing it in their home versus the other seven or so. I have a whole list of them here. That are, well, I only brought the first few. But there were something like 12, I believe, that are people who would watch your dog out of their home, but only five actually watched the dog in their home. But obviously, three of those are within five blocks of us.
But what I'm trying to get in my mind is, the five, are those dogs housed within the house?
Either within the house or within the property.
And not in a kennel where they could be barking and the noise go out in the neighborhood?
I do not know that information. But ours are also kept in the house.
Well, I'd like to know that, because you're comparing your situation proposed to them, and, and you're going to have some dogs housed outside in open kennels.
No. The, the open kennels are actually required by city rule, but it's not our plan to keep them in those kennels. We have a 408-square-foot indoor area for the dogs with indoor kennels on the inside of the house as well. We also have a series of kennels. We have a series of available areas that are separated inside the house for the dogs. The dogs, while they do go outside and go to the bathroom, are not being planned to be kept outside.
And not to be kept outside, ever?
Well, they have to go outside to go to the bathroom.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about that.
They, they are...
They'll not come be kept outside, ever?
They are inside the home from 10:00 PM until 8:00 in the morning every night. They are let out to go to the bathroom and occasionally outside, but we do our best to make sure that they aren't barking. So if they are outside, it's while we're there and making sure that they're not barking and causing any, any ruckus to the neighbors. I can't speak to the other people who here. They may have, they may keep them outside. I don't, I don't have that information.
I'm just trying to get the comparison.
Right.
All the questions or comments for the applicant?
Breeding operations, and I suspect kennels, are licensed by the state, right?
Once you reach a certain level of sales, yes. We, as of now, have not exceeded the number of litters per year to be licensed by the state. But as we have these additional litters, yes, we will also be licensed by the state as well.
So you've invited them in to review your operation already?
No. We haven't reached that point where we would have to yet. But as we grow, we will.
Well, I would like to hear that you've done the review. Because it's, it's expensive to go backwards after you do the fencing and everything. Because I looked it up on the State of Wisconsin website for, Because I looked it up on the State of Wisconsin website for, and I would like to see at least that you've gone and done a little research in that area.
We've...
Because there's a lot of operations, like you say, and around Platteville in the countryside, and they've all been working under rules and regulations by the state. They get their standard visits from the vets. They get their standard visits regarding cleanliness. They get the required, everything's organized under those rules. And that would be something I'd like to at least hear about, that you've reviewed.
Yes, we have looked at that law, but as I said, I mean, we haven't gotten to that point. However, part of the kennel license application is that the building inspector has to come out, the veterinarian has to come out, the health department has to come out, and all of these people have come out and have signed off on the property, and we've gotten nothing but rave, rave reviews from all of these individuals.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess a question for staff. Barking dog or dogs, what is the penalty?
I, I'm honestly not sure. That typically goes to the police department. They're the ones that usually get those complaints. I, I know there's some regulations regarding that, but I don't know what the requirements or penalties are.
I was just going to say that my wife and I, many years ago, we lived, excuse me, in a duplex. And next door was another duplex, and that person had a dog. He kept it outside. It barked, but he could never hear it. So what do we do with somebody that's, you know? What's the penalty for such a person?
Yeah, I, I know we have regulations regarding it.
I didn't hear the dog. You heard the dog?
I can provide that for the next meeting.
One thing, too, for the next meeting, I do plan on having some of our neighbors stop in and attest to the, the lack of barking dog as well, because they, they do appreciate us, and we've never had any issues, especially with, with immediate neighbors and whatnot.
Well, you're going to, if you board dogs, the dogs are going to change. You're not going to keep them forever. You can have different ones, or some may be dogs that bark.
And we have a soundproof kennel for that. It's a kennel inside of another kennel with soundproofing material around it to, to help abate the noise. We're doing what we can, trying to make sure that everything goes well and that no neighbors have issues.
We have an answer from our police officer in attendance on the dog, barking dog.
It's a ten-dollar forfeiture for a first offense for a barking dog with court costs and everything. I believe it's in the area of a hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents, so right, right around there.
How much?
A hundred and fifty dollars and some odd cents.
Thank you.
And pertains to just a residential or more of this business idea?
Any noise violation in the city.
Okay.
Well, animal complaint, a barking dog complaint. It doesn't specify whether it's commercial or not. If it were under a noise complaint, like if a business is making excessive noise, it's unwardened, that's a two-hundred-and-sixty-three-dollar violation.
And Joe, in this case, that would affect the permit. If there's a number five for staff analysis for home occupation, the ordinance includes a standard that no use shall create smoke, odor, glare, noise, dust, vibration, fire hazard, electrical interference, excess trash. So anything that would violate that, that affects this possible permit.
Right, so if, if it was approved, for instance, we could add that as a condition that, you know, if any of these things occur, then the conditional use permit could be revoked.
Any other questions? All right, this will be on our next council meeting. Thank you. The next is zoning amendment. Arlo Limited Occupancy Overlay District at five forty-five West Adams Street.
So the, the property at five forty-five West Adams just recently had the approval granted for a planned unit development for that three-unit apartment building. That was approved with a condition that the Arlo Limited Occupancy Residential Overlay District designation be placed on that property. Just for a little bit more information, if you don't recall, that designation would limit the number of unrelated individuals that could live in each unit, basically a maximum of two unrelated. So that we're just following through with that recommendation, going through the rezoning process to place that designation on the property. And this will be a, a public hearing at the next meeting as well. Any questions?
I have a question. We have a number of houses in this type of district, and Barb lives in one. I believe the number is a hundred and eleven. How is this going to be monitored when this is out there by itself? Three, three units out by themselves. Who's going to monitor something we not, you don't have the neighbors? But maybe the neighbors will be monitoring, by the way. How is the city going to monitor this?
Yeah, typically, it would be kind of the same process that we use for normal overcrowding circumstances. A lot of times, they do come from neighbors making comments about number of suspected residents on the property. We usually get tips. If a property owner has a certain number, they tend to be a lot of vehicles there, so we can check the plates. So sometimes, city employees are out doing other things. They, they may notice a situation that seems suspicious, so it's just investigation that's required. But a lot of times, it, it's based on neighborhood complaints or comments.
I know city staff has gone out and observed some of these early in the morning, for example.
Right.
And the university used to supply addresses or names and addresses of people living in the city. I don't believe they do that anymore.
That has been not as successful as it used to be, correct?
So they've stopped it?
They, they used to have a more, it used to have easier access to basically the, the information, and they don't provide that anymore for, I don't know what reasons, I guess, their own concerns about giving that information out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, anyone? All right, Contract seven nineteen, Street Maintenance.
Thank you. This is our annual thin overlay contract. The wheel tax of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is designated toward, toward this project. We listed a number of streets, and I end up reducing the number to get us down close to that, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I'm recommending that we approve the award for the reduced number of streets and absorb the other, just under three thousand dollars in our overall C I P budget.
Questions, anyone? All right, hearing done. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, we'll vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.